Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to ask staff to please call the roll.
Commissioner Obuali?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Migala?
Here.
And Chairman Cox?
Present.
We have a court.
Good news. We are small but mighty tonight. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the June 5th, 2023 session. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Upstate.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, 3 to 0 with one objection.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the chairman's opening statement. So it's my opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight. I just want to welcome those of you remote, city staff, reporter down front here, my fellow commissioners, appreciate everyone who's able to be here tonight. We've got four items on the agenda tonight to be heard, and as always, we'll hear more about those petitions coming up. I see a few faces here tonight who may know about our procedures, but if you're new tonight, we'll just quickly go through them so we can understand the process and make sure everyone is heard to the best of your ability. The commission's role is to be a hearing body for city council. So we hear these petitions, we provide recommendations to city council. But as far as the process for each of the petitions, we look to city staff to open, to review the staff report, give us their recommendations, and you'll notice a pattern here, but we as a commission will ask staff questions. Following that, we will look to the petitioner, petitioner teams to come on up to the lectern and to, sorry, I thought we were going to sound check, to, got a thumbs up. We'll look to the petitioner teams to tell us your thoughts and anything that you'd like to add to what the staff has presented. Following that, we will then take an opportunity to commission to ask questions if we have any. And once those questions have been satisfied, we will open each of these petitions up to public comment. So for those of you in the audience who want to comment on these petitions, that's your opportunity. Following that, we'll close the public hearing portion of the petition. We typically look back to city staff for any closing comments, and then we typically deliberate and pass the recommendations on to city council, as I said. Following that, there's typically two scheduled meetings for city council. If you're able to be a part of that, petitions are approved, you can work with staff to find out what those follow-on dates will be. But a general reminder, tonight is the open and closing portion of the public hearing for each of these petitions. So if you've got something to say, you've got questions, please, please, please bring those to light. All right. As always, like I said, we're very thankful for you to be here, and at this point in time, we'll move forward with the agenda. So the next item is to administer the oath to persons desiring to testify. So if that's you, even if you think it might be you, please stand, face the court reporter, and take the oath.
Will you raise your hands, please? Do you soundly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
That's a good turnout for such a small group. Appreciate that. All right. So the first item on the agenda is for 345 South McLean to establish a martial arts school.
Good evening, Chairman Cox, and good evening, everyone. So for the first petition before you is the application by Jose Garibay as applicant and Olson Family Joint Declaration of Trust as property owner, who are requesting a conditional use to establish a physical fitness facility, and other school and educational facility, more specifically, an after-school tutoring center, and a commercial event space all at the property commonly known as 345 South McLean Boulevard. And for the record, we do have proof of proper notice on this one. As usual, we'll start with the general overview of the subject property outlined here in yellow. The property is, the subject property is the 1,200 square foot vacant commercial building that sits on approximately half an acre property, properties at the northeast corner of US Highway 20 and South McLean Boulevard. It is Zone AB, area business district. As you can see, the properties to the northwest and to the south are all zoned the same. To the north is the multi-family, or multi-tenant commercial building with an accessory parking lot. To the south is Route 20, and beyond that are several commercial properties, including a Jiffy Lube motor vehicle service station and Wendy's restaurant. And then to the west, as you can see, is the vacant lot at 338 South McLean. East are single-family homes, which are zoned RC2, Residence Conservation District. So the subject building is one of three buildings on this property, but address is 335 343 and then 345 South McLean, which is the subject building. The property has two access driveways to South McLean Boulevard, and also includes an onsite parking lot with 29 parking stalls. The 335 South McLean building is home to a hair restoration service. The 343 South McLean building is home to a hair salon. And then the 345 South building, subject of tonight's petition, is currently vacant. So the applicant is proposing to open up a martial arts school with an after-school program. They would also rent the building, the facility, for various types of events, like birthday parties and other social gatherings. So the after-school program would be Monday through Friday. It would start at 2:00 p.m., and would generally go until about 4:00 p.m. Children would be picked up from local schools that are part of that program and brought to the facility. There, they would have, they would have assistance with homework, they would have different activities, snacks provided by parents, and then they would start participating in the martial arts classes that start at 4:00 p.m. The after-school program would, is expected to have about 15 students, and then martial arts classes would have up to 25 students per class. The classes would be offered from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and they would be open to adults and seniors as well. The weekends would be reserved for special events. The facility would be available for rent, for birthday parties, other types of celebrations, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is also the time when the applicant intends to offer different types of programs, such as self-defense classes for seniors, perhaps a parent's night out class where parents can drop off children for one or two sessions. The after-school, or excuse me, the events on the weekends are anticipated to have up to 36 participants with two employees. And it is during that time that the facility would have its largest parking demand. No concerts would be allowed, and the applicant is not proposing any alcohol as part of those events. But with 36 attendees for these events and up to two employees, the facility is required up to 11 parking stalls. And then with the parking requirement for the other two buildings on site, that would be a total parking requirement of 25 parking stalls for the entire property. And with 29 parking stalls on site, the entire property would continue to meet the parking requirement. The facility would also offer seasonal camps, which would generally run on weekdays, and would coincide with the times when the local schools are out, so during the spring break, winter break, and then the summer breaks. Those seasonal camps would run weekdays from 7:30 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and it would include various types of activities for children and students, including field trips, art, science, music, and of course martial arts classes. The application is required to meet the standards for conditional use. We've provided our overview of the standards in a packet, and we do believe that applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the packet. The applicant is here, he can address the commission if he has any questions.
Sounds good. Starting off with questions for staff. Commissioner Migala?
Yeah, just one, I think. All right, just one. So can you confirm, I think it was in your report, but I just find it surprising that the other businesses, the Brad Olson Hair Restoration and the salon are closed on Saturdays and the weekends? The salon usually make most of their business, a lot of their business, at least on the weekends.
Yes. So the hair restoration business is open only two days a week at 335 on Thursdays and Fridays, and the other business, the hair salon is also, it's in the packet, let me just take a quick peek at this. They have limited hours, and they're also by appointment only. Tuesdays through Saturdays, so they are open on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
So that, you factor that into your peak parking demand?
Yes, we do. Yep.
All right. Nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions for staff, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Obuali?
No questions.
I don't have any questions for you. Thank you. All right. We'll invite the petitioner to come on up now. Welcome, sir. And for all of you this evening who would be desiring to testify when you come up, you can please tell us your name, spell it, give us your address, and then let us know your thoughts.
My name is Jose Garibay. I'm the owner of US Taekwondo Academy. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous.
No worries. We're all people, right? So you're good.
Okay. You guys have questions for me, or do you want me to just say?
It's up to you, whatever you'd like to do. I mean, we can certainly ask questions, but I know staff always does a wonderful job presenting these petitions, but if there's anything you'd like to add, we'd love to hear it.
Oh, actually, what he was saying was basically spot on. Everything was very, very to the point. The only, as the owner, of course, I wanted the open up yesterday, but that didn't happen. So I was working with the mayor, and everything seems to be working out very nice. So a little slower than I would like, but you know, it's still happening.
It's faster than a herd of turtles stampeding through peanut butter.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
All right. So I mean, if you want, we can certainly move to questions.
I'm happy to answer anything.
All right. Commissioner Obuali, do you have anything for this gentleman?
I noticed on the weekends, you're closing early, like four or something, so there won't be any events at night?
The events would be determined by the clientele, literally. So with the, the program where we have the, we used to call it a movie night, now we call it a parent's night out, simply because you could get sued for having movies. But we call it a parent's night out simply just to give the parents a night out with themselves. And the kids have a nice, safe place to be, and they can make friends and enjoy themselves watching a movie, having pizza, other snacks, some drinks, drinks like water.
Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Jones?
So you've done this sort of business before?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious, out of curiosity, with the childcare component on it, the after-school care in the camps, what kind of certification, licensing, training does that entail for your staff and everybody involved in it?
As far as I understand, the state of Illinois doesn't give a certificate for that type of position.
Okay, but like background checks and that kind of?
Yes, we do background checks. And it's only me, me and another lady that would do it, and you're welcome to background check me if you'd like.
No, I'm not interested in that. Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Migala?
No, nothing further from the petitioner.
All right. I don't have any question for you.
All right.
Did a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys are welcome to come to class, too. Not that you guys are seniors. Hey, I'll teach anybody. It's really, really cool. We were in Hanover Park, and they hated to see us go. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. As promised, it's time to open this petition up to public comment. So anyone in the audience, want to take a chance to give us your thoughts? All right. It doesn't look like anyone's going to take that opportunity. So we will close the public hearing portion of this petition and look to staff for their thoughts.
Nothing further to add. It's an application for conditional use, so staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
All right. With that said, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 09-23.
I move to recommend that city council approve petition 09-23, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt, as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided in our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Excellent. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Obuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 4 to 0.
All right, sir. Thanks for coming. As we said, that's going to be the recommendation to city council. Continue working with staff to find out what the upcoming dates are for the hearings. All right. For the next item on the agenda, to my fellow commissioners, you may have noticed my architecture firm provided the petitioner and the city with an exhibit for their use in the petition, so I will need to recuse myself from this petition. At this point in time, I'd like the chair, I'm sorry, the commission to appoint a chairperson pro tem. Is there a nomination?
Yes.
If somebody could nominate, hopefully Commissioner Migala.
I nominate Mr. Migala.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Obuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, 4 to 0.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. All right. So our next item on our agenda is, as Commissioner, as Chairman Cox indicated, 450 Shepherd Drive, petition 12-23. Did we have proper notice, sir?
We, yes, we did.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Okay. So the second petition before you is the application by Grand Legacy Group LLC as the applicant, and Elgin Properties LLC as the property owner, who are requesting approval of a planned development as a conditional use with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code for the height of the fence within the street yard and any other departures as may be necessary to construct a six-foot-high, open design fence in the street yards, south and east of the existing building at the property commonly known as 450 Shepherd Drive. And as before, we'll start with the aerial map for the subject property. This is a 1.1 acre property that is located in the southwest industrial park, known as the Burnage Brothers Industrial Park. That park is generally south of Route 20 and west of South McLean Boulevard. This property in particular is at the northwest corner of Berkeley Street and Shepherd Drive. It is Zone GI, General Industrial. As you can see, the properties to the west and south have the same general shade of purple. They're also Zone GI and PGI, the one to the south. The property to the west is a one-story manufacturing building, and the property to the south is, as you can see, open space that's part of a larger light industrial development. To the north is a one-story office building that's Zone CI, Commercial Industrial, and then across Shepherd Drive to the east is one-story commercial building that's home to Elgin Lane's Bowling Alley. So the subject property is improved with a 30,000 square foot office building. It also includes an onsite parking lot with 57 stalls. You may recall, we had a petition in fall of last year for a cannabis craft grower on this property that received a recommendation for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately was approved by the city council in December of '22. The applicant is currently in the process of obtaining the building permit. They are now requesting approval to install a six-foot-high, open design fence that would generally enclose the property. The proposed fence is simply proposed for additional safety and security of the building due to the cannabis business on site. So the proposed fence is allowed north and west of the building, but it is not allowed east of the building and south. Those are two street yards between the building and the street, where only a four-foot-high, open design fence is allowed. As you can see, they are proposing a six-foot-high, black, sort of wrought iron type, uh, security fence. The property is less than two acres, so the applicant is requesting approval of planned development as a conditional use. They are proposing to install some landscaping on the exterior of the fence along the east property line. However, along the south property line, that parking lot is about a one foot from the south property line, so there's just enough space for the fence. So there will be no landscaping on the south side of that, of that fence. The applicant would install security gates, with access for the fire department across the three driveway access points, one across Shepherd, and then two from Berkeley Street. And here are two images of what that fence would look like. The proposal requires two departures from the zoning ordinance. The first one that I mentioned, code allows only a four-foot-high fence in the street yards. The applicant is proposing a six-foot-high fence. The second one is the proximity of the fence to the, essentially, the street. Within 20 feet of the street, or the intersection of two streets, only a three-foot-high obstruction is allowed. They are proposing a 12-foot separation, which is best visible, let's see if I can show that. Okay. So generally, from this point right here, the corner of the fence, which is the southeast corner of the property, to the curb of the street at the closest point, it's 12 feet, that's where the code requires a minimum of 20-foot setback separation. We've requested the applicant provide these exhibits to show that the fence, as installed, would not obstruct the view of vehicles. This is southbound on Shepherd Drive. Any vehicles needing to go to the right, towards west, would obviously be able to make a right turn movements without any problems. And then the picture on the left shows, this is the Berkeley Street, and any vehicles traveling eastbound, approaching the intersection, can clearly see any vehicles coming southbound on Shepherd Drive. So the fence is not obstructing the view. The proposal is required to meet the standards for planned developments and standards for conditional use. We've went over those standards in the staff report. We do believe that applicable standards are satisfied, and staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the packet.
All right. Thanks, Dever. I'll turn to my commissioners to see if they have any questions for the city. Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thanks.
Commissioner Obuali?
No questions.
All right. Is the petitioner present?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead and step up to the podium, and if there's any other thoughts or comments you have, any additional comments you have with respect to your petition, if yours?
Hey, good evening. My name is Rod Collins, R-O-D-C-O-L-L-I-N-S, and the property that we are the owners of, 450 Shepherd Drive in Elgin.
Do you have any other comments on the petition?
I just wanted to say that the reason for the six-foot-high fence is not only for security purposes for employees, but it's also for trespassers as well. As a matter of fact, just last night, well, you guys may know that there's a homeless shelter pads of Elgin, less than, less than a block from our facility. And we do get a lot of trespassers on the property that, you know, sleep at night on the property. So it would be a way to, you know, deter them, you know, from, from coming onto the property and causing harm to either themselves or others. Just last night, we had someone, and we believe it was a homeless person, actually break into the building. Didn't cause any damage, but they did go in, and we had to dispatch the Elgin Police to make sure everything was okay. But we've, we've heard this before, that, you know, they would go into the property at night to find a place of shelter to sleep. So a six-foot fence, we think, would, you know, be ideal for basically hindering or detering these trespassers from coming onto the property, causing either damage or startling employees at night, or what have you. So a forfeit, a four-foot fence would probably be the height of this lectern, which is not really a security, a security measure. We feel like six feet will provide a little bit more security from someone trying to jump the fence, either because they know that cannabis is on the property, or because they want to trespass onto the property. So I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right. Start with Commissioner Obuali. Any questions for the petitioner? Oh, any questions for the petitioner?
And you called me? Um, is there any operations there yet?
Not yet. We're still going through the process of doing the build-out, so we're selecting contractors as we speak.
And assuming this gets approved, how quick will the fence go up?
We would like, first of all, it would be a construction fence, because, you know, we'll have contractor crews coming in and out. But during the process of, before becoming operational, the fence will be up. So we're thinking within the next 180 days.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm sorry, that happened over there. And if I recall correctly from the presentation, you guys have some pretty intense security, once everything's up and operation, as far as cameras and security and things at the facility, too, right?
Yeah, that's correct. So it will be monitored by the Illinois State Police, and they could have 24-hour access to patch in to make sure everything is going the way it should go.
And with those wrought iron fences, where there's see-through like that, is six feet as high as you can go? Sorry, I jumped back to stay up.
So per code, normally, a six-foot-high is what's permitted inside and rear yards, and then four feet is the max in the, in the street yards. So certainly, any applicant could request for more, but in the past, we've, we've normally allowed only six-feet-high fences, because they're generally acceptable and do not obstruct view and are not visually too obstructive, so.
Hopefully, that does the trick. It can be unpleasant to deal with that experience, so I wish you luck.
Thank you. I just have one question. So it looks like there's going to be gates, right, with respect to the fences?
Yeah.
How many gates are you going to have, and where are they going to be, and how are those going to be operated?
Hi, Mr. Drews, Stephen Drews, D-R-E-W-S, 111 North Avenue, Barrington, is the address for the office firm, representing Cobu Architecture Studio. Those gates are mechanically operated, and there are three locations where the entrances are off the, from the streets.
Operated from like the inside of the premises, or?
Yes.
More detail?
There's a keep, either be a keypad type of action to get into it. There will be a access for the fire department to have a key, to get mechanically operate those gates as well.
As well as access for trash removal and dumpster, the dumpster garbage man to come in. All right. I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open this up to public comment then. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this petition, 12-23? Nobody? Okay. Seeing none, I'll refer back to the city for any summary and final thoughts. Yeah, you can sit down.
Thank you, Chairperson Migala. Nothing further to add, staff. This is again, application for a planned development as a conditional use due to departures for the fence, so staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions.
Excellent, thank you. The Chair Protem will entertain the motion with respect to 12-23.
I move to recommend that city council approve petition 12-23, subject to the conditions outlined within the staff report and adopt as the findings of the commission, the documents and conditions provided within the staff report.
My second.
Excellent, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? The mayor please call the room. Oh, is he a comment?
I just wondered if it, with certain types of fences and in situations, is that something the city would ever entertain to go higher with these, with the visibility not blocking any traffic? And I get the four foot and the six feet, but like eight feet would even be more deterrent of keeping things out of there.
It would. I think we would be hesitant to allow a fence taller than six feet. It may be appropriate. We would have to analyze that. It would certainly be a unique circumstance because we have not allowed eight-foot-high fences, especially in the street yards, anywhere that I can think of. The one facility that required a security fence was the Fox River Water Reclamation District Facility on Wellington, south of downtown, east of the river, where they were constructing a new pump station. And they installed a six-foot fence with a curved top to that fence that provided more security, but it was not higher than six feet. That facility is kind of secluded. It's away from, generally from the public view. And they felt that a six-foot fence is adequate. It's a little bit of a different design. And I think if the applicant wanted to change the design of this fence, we certainly wouldn't obstruct, you know, object to that. So, that may be an option. So, we would probably lean towards a different design of the fence rather than for a taller fence. It would just be out of character for the industrial park and most other properties, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion on the motion? The mayor please call the room.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Epstein.
And Chair Protem Migala?
Yes.
The motion is approved, 3-0, but one abstention.
Okay, thank you. I yield back to Chairman Cox.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for a well-run petition, Commissioner McGowan, Chair Protem. All right, thanks for coming this evening. All right, next item on the agenda is 16 to 24 North Airlight Street for the construction of a three-story commercial residential mixed-use building.
Okay, the next item is the application by Airlight Square LLC as applicant and property owner who is requesting approval of an amendment to the conditional use ordinance number G607 and a planned development as a conditional use with various departures from the Elgin Municipal Code to construct a three-story mixed-use building with approximately 2,000 square-foot commercial space and 16 residential units with 32 garage parking spaces, all at the property commonly known as 16 to 24 North Airlight Street. Here again is the outline of the subject property. In this case, the property is on the west side of Airlight Street, just north of Larkin Avenue intersection. It's about 1.7 acres in size. As you can see, the properties to the north, south, and to the east are all Zone AB, Area Business District. To the north are two one-and-a-half-story office buildings. To the east, across North Airlight, is a two-story multi-tenant commercial building with accessory parking lot. And then to the south are single-family homes that are zoned RB Residence Business District and then B1 in King County, those that are unincorporated. And then to the west are a variety of commercial businesses. The one in purple is Zone GI General Industrial. That's a former barn that is part of a contractor shop that is next door. The two properties that do not have a color over them, those are unincorporated. They are located in the King County. Zone BI, which is business, and they are home to a self-storage facility and also a contractor shop. So, the subject property is improved with a approximately 7,200-square-foot commercial building, the photo on the left, and a single-family residence, that's the photo on the lower bottom. The site also includes onsite surface parking lot that includes 58 parking spaces. The commercial building onsite includes three tenants. Those are a hair salon, a dentist's office, and a law office. The existing building was approved in 2007 by ordinance G607. That planned development as a conditional use was sort of granted approval for various phases of this project known as Airlight Square. The first building, the one that has been completed, the 7,200-square-foot building, was an adaptive reuse of a furniture store at that time. And now it includes three commercial tenant spaces. The second phase included the construction of the underground stormwater detention facility under the parking lot and then the construction of the surface parking lot that also stands today. And then the final phase of that development, I think it was called Phase Three at the time, but we're going to call it Phase Two, that included this 15,000-square-foot building along the north property line that was going to include underground parking garage. And the image of that building is on the top. And this site plan is the 2007-approved site plan. Obviously, the first phase of that development, the commercial building and the parking lot were completed, but the second phase, the 15,000-square-foot building, was never commenced. So, now, the applicant is proposing a new planned development approval, this time to construct a three-story mixed-use building instead of that 15,000-square-foot office building that was not, that has not been started. This three-story building would include 16 residential units, 32 garage parking spaces, and approximately 2,000 square-foot commercial tenant space. The tenant space would be located at the front portion of the building, closest to North Airlight Street. That would be this portion right here. And then behind that, on the ground floor, would be the 16 garage parking spaces facing south and 16 facing north. That would be total 32 stalls. And then 16 apartments, eight on the second floor and then eight on the third floor of that building above the garage units. The main entrance to the residential portion would be on the south side, which is indicated here and on the site plan right there. And then the main entrance to the commercial part of the tenant space would be right here on the east end of the building. The site development includes the addition of five parking stalls right here along North Airlight and then the construction of a second access driveway along the north property line. All proposed units would be two-bedroom units that would range between 1,094 square feet to 1,116 square feet in floor area. All units would be market rates, would include two-car garage for each unit, central HVAC system. All units would have balconies and washer and dryer and modern appliances. The architecture of that building matches the existing commercial building. The building would include brick, red brick masonry and then stone masonry on the bottom. Some fiber cement siding would be used to clad the second and third floor apartments. The entrance to the commercial space would include a pergola that would sort of accentuate that front entrance. And the front commercial space would also include these arch windows that were visible in the commercial building that's at 16 North Airlight. The site improvements include removal of a few trees, but the applicant will install 15 new shade trees and they would, they've also agreed to pay $3,000 as a fee in lieu of replacement of some replacement inches that are also required by the tree preservation ordinance. In general, their landscaping and tree preservation meets the zoning ordinance requirements. So, the proposed building, so the residential units are required to have two parking stalls per unit and with the two garage stalls for each unit, that satisfies the parking requirement for the residential units. On the commercial side, if the commercial tenant space is occupied by a general retail use, that requires one for $2.50. In that case, the entire property would be required a total of 60 parking spaces and with 63 parking spaces proposed to be on-site, that would satisfy the parking requirement. However, the applicant has requested departure from the parking requirements to be able to lease the commercial tenant space in both buildings to any use that is allowed as a permitted use on-site without the need to go for a parking variance in the future. If the front commercial space of the new building is occupied by a restaurant, the entire property could be required a total of 85 parking spaces for the commercial tenants. And obviously, with the 63 on-site, that would not meet the requirements. However, the property has, currently, the demand for parking is very low. And then the tenants in the building have offsetting hours of operations, which results in a significant number of parking spaces available on-site for the future tenants of the building zone. That is one of the departures that is requested. The others are summarized in the staff report and I'll quickly go over them. There are, because the applicant is not proposing a subdivision, so all this will be on one zoning lot. Per code, only one principal building is allowed. They're obviously proposing two. With the new building, the total building floor area for the zoning lot exceeds the maximum permitted. As you can see, 38,860 is the maximum permitted. They're proposing 44,717. The street yard setback required is nine feet. The new parking lot expansion is sort of in line with the existing parking lot and that does not meet that setback, 6.8 feet. The side setbacks for the parking area, six feet is required. They're proposing a two-foot setback from the north and from the west property lines to accommodate that second access driveway on the north and access to the garages on the north side of the building. The overall parking area is required to have a total of 1,688 square feet of vehicle use area interior landscape yard. They are proposing approximately 1,250. However, I mentioned that all landscaping proposed meets the zoning ordinance requirements for the number of trees and shrubs. And then the number of parking spaces I mentioned, they're requesting a parking requirement or a parking departure to be able to lease the parking or the commercial tenant spaces to any permitted uses that are allowed in the AB district. Floor area of the residential units, minimum is 1,100 square feet for two-bedroom units. The units range between 1,094 and 1,116. If they eliminated the balconies and made those balconies into an interior space, that would get them over that threshold, but we felt that it was a good amenity to have for those units to have an outdoor balcony. And finally, the refuse collection area that's needed for the building is on the west side of the building. That does not meet that six-foot setback. They're proposing a two-foot setback. The proposal is required to meet the standards for planned developments and conditional use. Our analysis of the standards is provided in the packet, so I'm not going to go over that. But staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. I'll start with Commissioner Jones. Questions for staff?
Thanks, Tamir. This is, this, do you know by chance how many notifications, public notice of this property went out to the surrounding area? It seems so similar to the one that we had last month as far as apartment development, a little bit smaller and in kind of a similar neighborhood situation like that. How many houses are residential? Do we know that information? I'm sorry.
I can provide that to you. I'll have to look through the files, but I can certainly tell you exactly how many labels we sent or how many notices we sent out based on the number of labels that we mailed out.
Okay, I was just curious because of the participation engagement.
The, this one probably had more, and I say that because every one of these buildings is a multi-tenant building and we send it to the owner of record and then also to every occupant. So, the two buildings to the north and then the building to the east are multi-tenant buildings, so there were a lot of notice that needed to be sent out for those. So, in general, I think there was a little bit more for this petition than for the Giffords Crossing that I believe you're referring to from last month.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'd be curious because it seems very similar to me and a very different response. So, thank you very much for that.
Commissioner Abouali?
No questions.
Commissioner Migala?
I see, maybe I missed it. Maybe it's more a question for the petitioner. But is there access from the building to, on the west side, to access the trash receptacle? Because if you're going to prohibit, you know, the apartments from having trash bins in the garage, I mean, I would like there to be, you know, easy access.
Sure, the floor plan I did not, and maybe the applicant is going to have as part of their presentation that we can kind of address. But the floor plan is in the packet, obviously. This site plan shows, there's an interior corridor that kind of runs down the center and then there are staircases that lead to the north side of the building. These are two staircases, so one can exit on the north side of the building and then walk down the path to the trash enclosure, which is on the northwest corner of the property right here.
How far is the door from the corner, right there?
I don't have, that looks like about 30, 40 feet from the staircase that leads down.
46 feet according to the exhibit in the packet.
Thank you.
Excellent, okay. And then on the west side, is that grassy area going to be utilized for anything? Is that accessible or is that going to be closed off on both sides?
So, it will be open. There's no fence proposed other than the enclosure around the refuse trash. So, this area right here, you see a dashed line, that's a stormwater drain. So, this space will be green space with landscaping, but it would not be closed off.
I was just thinking it'd be a good space for like a dog run or something. Lot of concrete around there. Nothing further, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, my question related to the trash enclosure, but from a slightly different angle. It looks like there is an existing enclosure adjacent to the front building. And just looking at the departures, you know, for parking or for future retail or future restaurant, those kind of make sense. The vehicle use area setback of two feet on the north side is, the strict application, I understand it is two feet, but in reality, we're 24 and a half feet from the property line to the face of the building. So, you know, just thinking about how this fits in the fabric of the neighborhood. The only thing that sort of bothered me was the appendix, I guess, of the trash enclosure on the end of that building. And it just seemed to me that that could be combined or addressed in a different way with the trash enclosure in the front of the building. Now, I'm sorry, near the front building. I understand that is probably minor, but to me, that's the one departure that I'm not comfortable with. I think there could be some very minimal design. I understand it would affect a stall, a parking stall, but maybe there's just got to be a more more frequent trash pickup or something, you know, to avoid inconveniencing the neighbor to the west. And I understand it's a manufacturing, industrial, or, you know, building trades use. But just thinking if that changes, now we've suddenly got the least desirable part of a new development two feet away from someone's property. So, I kind of have an objection to that. I'm curious what staff's perspective would be on that.
Well, it was, we're always trying to find a balance when we discuss. And this has been a long conversation with the applicant over the last year and a half, trying to get to a building design and site layout that we feel we can support despite the number of departures. From day one, we had recommended that a refuse collection area be placed in that central island, the one right here. We had recommended that maybe that may be a better solution for that, that it's sort of central. for that, that it's sort of centrally located for the residences, perhaps it can be combined with the, the existing one that's on the west end of the existing building that's, I believe enclosed with wood. But at the end of the day, you know, they needed to provide an ADA accessible walk to the entrance which goes through that island, it was also important to, to break up that space, that, that, that sea of asphalt with some greenery and landscaping. And at the end of the day, the only space that was left was sort of behind the building and we felt that maybe that's a trade-off that we can live with so that we have more greenery in the parking lot, considering what the uses are to the west, you know, a, a self-storage facility that's immediately to the west and the fact that they will be enclosing this with a six-foot-high fence, actually a, a masonry wall that's going to match the building, we felt that it's, it's a good balance. Is it too close? Perhaps, maybe it's closer than what we've done in the past, but considering what's next door and, and the, what the alternative could be, it would be better to, to have it behind the building rather than in the middle of the parking lot.
Okay. I know it's, it's always subjective and I know and appreciate how much work goes into the staff, staff exercise before we get to this point.
Sure.
All right, that was my only question for you, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, at this point in time then, we'll invite the petitioner team for this petition to come on up to the lectern.
My name's David Gerina, I was the architect for the, the project, Gerina's J-U-R-I-N-A, 18 Warburg Place, Elgin, Illinois. Oh, I'm well done.
Very well, moving on to questions.
All right, so, just a brief presentation, basically pretty much what staff has already kind of alluded to. You know, I started this project in two, was it 2006, I think it was, so if you want to go to the next slide. So, this just shows that what we have here is, this was the original site, very, there was up-front parking, there was the, the furniture store as he alluded to of 7,200 square feet. So, when Joan brought me into the project, she said that, you know, this was going to be subdivided into a three condominium unit, so of commercial. And we were going to develop the interior as was going to be parking lot and then we were going to do a phase two where you see the building up to the north there, which is that residential home. Next slide. So, here it is all developed, you can see phase two was up on the top there, phase one was here. So, what we were trying to do was align the drives for the, the, across Airlight there, add some more green space in front of 16th North Airlight and then also, of course, then we had to add the underground detention area for the site, that would be able to support phase two and phase one. Next slide. So, you can see the evolution of the building for, for phase one. It started off as just a plain metal building, I think it was a, like a lawn, a lawn, like equipment and service shop, then it became a furniture store which it remained for in the 2000s till we, till, till Airlight Square bought it in 2008, which then we kind of did one more makeover and added all the masonry, plating and, and, and tried to convert the, the architecture of the building. So, the next slide. So, what we were trying to do is accentuate the building with the commercial area. When we looked at the zoning, we were told that there was no way to kind of do all apartments, which is really what Joan really wanted to do in the beginning. The reason for that was is we had originally gone with medical suites for the building, but then in 2008, well, the economy, the, the economy had downturned and then the Great Recession hit. She also had a $300,000 cost to the underground storage, so she decided to shelf the project at that point. So, what we tried to do was try to create some kind of circulation around the building where we have a, a front, actually, maybe go to the next slide. Ah, here we are. So, what, what you're talking about is, yeah, we didn't, we pushed the building pretty much as far north as, as far, actually, as far north as we could with the drive aisle and then we had to marry that to the existing parking lot. So, what we tried to do was, is get as many architectural, well, we tried to get as many bedroom, two-bedroom apartments as we could that could, that the build, building footprint could support. Because originally what we had in 2008, we had an underground parking garage, that parking garage was going to have the residual parking for the facility. So, what we tried to do is accommodate all the bedroom parking under the, with garages, but not an underground parking garage, more just surface garages that we're going to be able to put on site and then you would access with the north drive and then the south drive. What that allowed us to do was to connect the interior with an east drive so we could have some circulation around the building and then have a north entrance which is going to be, you know, a, a great benefit to the site because what happens when school lets out, there's a elementary school just north, the buses have a tendency to line up on, on Airlight there, that's, it's a very unique intersection, I don't think there's any intersection like it, but with Airlight, Footlight and Larkin all coming together there, traffic can back up quite a bit and so people trying to turn left into the, into the, the parking lot were having difficulty and that was one of the, the problems that she had with, you know, when we were developing this, that she wanted to get a northern entrance so that people had an alternative to get into the site. All right, next slide. So, we just really wanted to keep the architecture pretty much the same, to keep it all Airlight Square development, so we wanted to keep the same architectural features. Next slide. The site is very much sloped down to the, the end of the property, so from north Airlight, from north Airlight all the way down to the west end of the property, we have quite a bit of grade drop about eight to 10 feet and so that was one of the challenges that we had to face when we were developing the architecture. But we did try to keep the building kind of a, in a stagger, tried to repeat some nicer elements that we have with the architecture, again, the commercial, you know, using all masonry, kind of giving it more presence up front and then using, maybe mixing the, the elements a little bit more with the architecture as it marched down through the site, giving, you know, some, some, some brick veneer pediments as well as trying to accentuate the, the entry to the, to the, to the, to the apartment building with a, with a, with a, with a low arch. Next slide. So, when Joan first approached me for this project, one of the things that she really wanted to do was, we were doing the renovation, she says that the facades just, the, the project had to have arches. And so, one of the signature things that we really wanted to add was come up with kind of a new arch for this project. And when I was in Europe, I, I got the chance as, you know, an architect to kind of travel around and I hitchhiked through Italy and, and I was able to, well, I was on the road quite a bit, so I'd get to see some of the, some of the bridges in, in, in and around Italy and around Rome. And one of the things that I noticed was that the bridges had these, these very nice low slung arches, very graceful and a lot of times I used them in repetitive fashion and that always stuck in my mind and, and so when she asked me for a, an arch or like a, I wanted to give her something kind of unique and so that became kind of the signature for this project was to kind of do these, these low spring-lined arches and try to use them as a repetitive element for the architecture. So, thank you. Any questions?
Well, we'll certainly take that opportunity. I'll start with my left compatriot here, Commissioner Abouali.
I don't have questions, but I just want to say I'm excited to see this, you guys did a lot with little to work with, it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner McGala?
My questions, my questions were answered by the city, so do you have anything else to add to that with respect to distance, accessibility to the trash site for the residents?
Yeah, we, we sort of, we want to do recycling, but unfortunately, you know, because we were limited with, with the trash and where we could locate it, you know, it, it just wasn't going to be possible unfortunately. It, not that it was an after-site, but the building, you know, was supposed to move forward more, but because we needed that up-front parking, we needed to get, it just, everything kind of got squeezed and so we ended up getting just enough for the, the trash, well, the trash enclosure in the back, but unfortunately no recycling, so. It is about 44 feet or 46 feet, I think, from the, the back stair as you, as you, you've got to go across the, the back garages here to get there. But there is an interior corridor that everybody has access to, so it's, it's a, you know, it, and then also at the garages there, you could come out and access it through there as well.
Very good, nothing further.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, so thanks for coming up this evening. All right, as before, although the crowd has dwindled a bit, now is the opportunity for those of you in the audience who would like to comment on this petition to come on up. All right, I see people with their heads down on their phones actively avoiding my gaze or otherwise. Now I got a lot of smiles. All right, I believe we can safely say everyone's had the opportunity, we can close the public hearing portion of this petition. So, we're back to you, Demir, would you like to weigh in on anything further?
Nothing further to add, staff believes standards for approval have been satisfied and staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet.
Excellent. All right, as before, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition which is 05-22.
Chairman Cox, I recommend approval of petition 16-24, sorry, 05-22, read the wrong set of numbers. 05-22, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report, adopt as our findings of fact, those findings of fact proposed by the city in its report.
Thank you, is there a second?
One second.
All right, it's Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sorry.
I don't know why, I had a feeling that someone would need to hear that. All right, look to staff please to call the roll.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved for 2-0.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming this evening. All right, so the last petition on our agenda tonight is petition 16-23, it's for amendment to Title 19 zoning to modify some of the details of, of that section. And in bold, it says, "Staff requests this item to be continued to August 7, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting." So, we can certainly look to staff if you'd like to say anything, if not, the chair would entertain a motion for this to be continued to that date certain time of day.
I will just read for the record the, the petition which is the amendment to Title 19 zoning of the Elgin Municipal Code to amend the list of uses which are prohibited within the Ark, arterial road corridor overlay district, as well as the circumstances under which those, those uses are prohibited in the Ark by the, as the, by the Development Administrator of the City as the applicant. So, we're simply requesting a little bit more time to finalize this text amendment and hopefully we'll bring this to you at our next meeting on August 7. So, unless there's any questions, we would recommend a motion to continue to August 7.
I move to recommend that we continue to August 7.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, staff please call the roll.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved for 2-0.
Well, we want you to have time to get it right.
Thank you. And we appreciate that for sure.
Yeah. All right, item G, other business, anyone on the commission have anything they want to discuss? Commissioner Jones?
I just want to extend my condolences to our fellow Commissioner Valdez who is, him and his family, on the passing of their mother this last week, so my sincere condolences to him and his family.
Very much support what you said. All right, Commissioner McGala, Commissioner Abouali, any other business for the commission?
No.
All right, item H, public comment, so of those of you in the audience, if you'd like to comment on anything that you saw here tonight except for petition-related items, now is your opportunity. All right, if sheaks no is fine, look back to staff for the summary of pending development applications.
The city council is scheduled to grant the final approval for the two items that were in front of you at the last month's meeting, the one is for the pergola at the Alessandra's Cafe Restaurant and then for the text amendment related to the brew pubs, those things are scheduled for approval this Wednesday at the council meeting. And then the council is scheduled to consider the application for the annexation of the property for Gifford Crossing, that residential development that was mentioned earlier at, on Big Timber just west of, of North McLean. It, anything, let's see, nothing else of note, we have recently received a few applications, so we expect to have eight or August meeting quite, quite full, but I'm happy to answer any questions about any of these petitions. We're not going to be ready to finalize the schedule for August until sometime next week probably, so it's kind of premature to outline any of them, but we'll, we'll certainly have a meeting on August 7.
Did you say there were eight or was that a slip, a slip of the tongue?
Probably slip of the tongue, we had several, we're not going to finalize the, the agenda until sometime next week, but it's not going to be eight, I can only process so many, but, but we will, we'll have a few.
Okay, oh, I was just going to say we're going to have to order in pizza. All right, thank you for that. Last item on the agenda is adjournments.
Actually, I have a question for the city.
Sure.
So, one of the items on your report here is West Point Gardens, I've had some inquiries from neighbors regarding this and can you just give a little more color in terms of where we're at with it?
Yes, so...
Nestler and Marigold?
Yes, so we, that one is actually not on here, but that one came in late last week and we did not put it on this particular schedule, but there is an, an application for about 60 townhome units on the site of the former Memory Care Senior Development that was at the northeast corner of Shannon Parkway and Daisy Lane which is just south of Route 20. It's a vacant site that, like I said, it was slated for the Elgin Memory Care Senior Development that was never completed, so then it had to be demolished, so the site is vacant and the new owner is proposing essentially apartments that will look like townhomes, so there will be a, a market rate rental product and, again, I can't remember exactly how many units, but I'm going to say about 60 or so. So, that may come in, in August, it was a fairly complete submittal, but we'll have to take a look at it and we'll see what happens.
It, it is actually on the items, it's on page three or four, but it's under city council items.
It is?
I, I do see a petition there for West Point Gardens, South Phase 3, 74 single-family homes.
Top of page three.
Oh, no, 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 that's a totally different, that's a, that, that is a petition that went before you guys, while back, this is a, that's a project for a single-family product, that's a, that's a phase three that's south of Nestler, I apologize if you were asking me for something else, we have another application for what I just mentioned with townhomes on Daisy Lane, but yeah, this, this item is, from all we can gather, it, it, it may not happen, this developer might have walked away, but it's still on here, due to the current investment landscape, this one may be challenging to finance, but we're still waiting to hear from the applicant if they want to withdraw or not.
Yeah, it's, it's been dormant for a while in terms of like activity, so.
Yes.
Some people ask me and so, whatever.
Yes, no problem.
All right, just to take one more, pass down the commission here, any other discussion? All right, if not, then we'll move on to adjournments.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Magala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.